Begin by reviewing the agenda. Tonight we'll have public comment. In new business, we have the appointment of city officers, the 2023 Development Authority Board Appointments, the 2024 Board and Committee Appointments, sale of an unopened street, Georgia Municipal Employee Benefit Retirement Plan Restatement, the Highland Drive headwall rehabilitation, non-residential development fees, and Charles Abbott Associates Incorporated Building Inspection and Plan Review Service. Those are the items on the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Send them in.
Second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, tonight we have public comment. The mayor and city council welcome any public comment at this time. This portion of the meeting is for comments from citizens on any city issue, not for questions or debate. If you have questions, you will find contact information for all council members on the city website, or you may contact city hall staff. Thank you for attending our council meeting. Is there anyone here who would like to make any public comments?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. My name is Boebert the second, and I suppose I should be right here. I just want to, first of all, thank the council for hearing the comments that I want to bring tonight, and I have a few handouts for you. If I could ask that you start on one end and just pass them down to each one. It's just a little, everything is going to be self-explanatory, but it helps give a visual on what we want to talk about, or at least what I want to talk about. First handout is a map that...
Sorry, they're coming now.
They're coming now.
That was slow.
No, no worries, no worries. The first is a map that really encircles a little area that everybody knows about. It's Old West Point Road that connects from Highway 103 from Columbus to end at Highway 18, and then it connects from there all the way into the city of West Point. Now, why is that a concern for the council? Because there are some residents on that road that have annexed into the city. And because of all of the progress and the construction that's being done around the area, it has become a corridor of just unbelievable traffic. We have some statistics in that second handout that shows about 2,000 cars a day pass on that county road that was originally designed for a lot fewer than that. In addition to the number of cars, now we also have 18-wheelers which are prohibited off of that roadway as well. So, the question is, is there something that can be done from a municipal-city perspective to help us manage and mitigate some of those issues? Now, the secondary or tertiary issues that come about with that much traffic, you get damage. You get damage to the roadway. I left my reflectors back there. But because of the 18-wheelers, I walk the talk. Because of the 18-wheelers, we have a problem with losing reflectors. And, I mean, they're popping up all over the place. Weight has a lot to do with whether or not these reflectors will stay in place. Everybody's seen them, you know, and they are a matter of public safety. We talked to the county about it, and they agree that because of, you know, unwarranted weight and that kind of thing, wear and tear on that roadway, you know, you're going to have these problems. These help folks keep going from one side to the other. There's a lot of wildlife out there. There are a lot of cars and so forth that are coming through. There are at least four school buses that cycle through that space out of Harris County every school day. They cycle through the new subdivision. They are coming back into West Point, into the portions of Harris County that are quote-unquote "in the city proper." Now, as far as those reflectors go, those are important, but this one is really important because this marks where a fire hydrant is located. If it's not there, and firefighters need to find a fire hydrant in the middle of the night, or during a storm, or whatever, that might be a problem. Long and short, because of increased traffic, there has to be increased management. We're not asking the city to do anything unwarranted. We're just asking as the officers drive by, and they do a great job. We are very happy with the fact that the city of West Point dispatches cars to come through, but drive-throughs really don't capture the problem. The problem is, with shift changes, we see the greatest number of violations. If we look at the clock, that's when they happen. You can set the clock bind. So if we had a stationary vehicle with some agreement with the sheriff's department in Harris County, I'm sure that we could manage that until the new construction yields the results that you want over off of 18 as it connects with the on-ramps to 85. I also have these photos I'll share with y'all. Let the city manager see it, too. When you have uncontrolled traffic and so forth, damage occurs not only to county property, but to city property. That manhole cover is a part of the industrial waste system that comes from the city park. Because 18-wheelers run over them, it knocks the cover off, noxious fumes come out of that area. I spent 30 years in industrial engineering managing systems that were sold to make that happen, so I know how they work. The gases are meant to be contained. If the manhole covers are off, then that's a problem. My five minutes are up, but the bottom line is, I want everybody to know that the folks on Old West Point Road need your help. We need your help. Just because acreage, you know, divides us, we're still a community, and we need for folks to pay us some attention. We are a part of the city. We are a part of your constituency. You're fortunate that you are members at large, so you don't have to worry about what district you deal with. Just help us to deal with our problems. So, that's all I have. Yes, that is a crack pipe. We also pick up our own garbage on that road to help the county out, and I passed around some photos of the garbage we pick up. That is not unusual to find, you know, illicit paraphernalia up and down that road when we're out there picking up trash. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barber. Okay, do we have anyone else that wants to make public comment this evening? No, we'll close that section, and we'll move into new business. First item on the agenda tonight is the appointment of city officers, which we'll do Monday night. The current officers is municipal court judge Luther Jones, judge pro temp Benjamin Wilcox, prosecuting attorney Mark Carlton, assistant prosecuting attorney Alex Dixon, city attorney Alex Dixon, public defender Brian Joe Appleton. Those are our current city officers. Do we have any comments or questions from council?
No questions. City reporter and judge are synonymous.
City reporter and judge are synonymous?
City reporter, pro temp, and judge pro temp.
Alex, will you take that?
I'm not sure what... I mean, some courts used to be called reporters' courts. I don't know if you know what it says.
Under here it says appointments of city officers, and you list municipal court judge, city reporter, pro temp. So, what you show on the ground here, you list municipal court judge.
It's the same. It's not a separate position. It's just the assistant, assistant judge.
Mr. Mayor, is there been any movement on Brian Appleton's situation?
We spoke with Alex today, and as far as we know, he's still practicing law and wishes to be the public defender unless anything's changed, Alex.
That's correct. Communicated with all the current city court staff. They all indicated they would like to continue to serve. I don't have any further update on Mr. Appleton. I mean, there is, there's not, charges are in the same condition they were before. There's not an actual case filed, and he's still a member in good standing with the state bar, practicing in La Grange. He has moved his, when he was hired last year, his office was in West Point. His law office is now in La Grange. Other than that, I don't have any additional information. I did communicate with him that he wishes to continue to serve, as do all the current staff members.
Anybody else?
Did anybody else apply, other than the current ones we have here?
No, ma'am. There are not that many cases appointed to him. I checked with Ms. Hewley, the clerk administrator, court administrator. He does not have any current cases assigned to him. I don't know specifically how many he gets per year, but it's not many.
And our practice is not to advertise these unless there's a vacancy. Just because we're coming into a new year, do we normally, I mean, nobody would know to apply? I mean, do we do to apply?
That's correct. I don't think there was any, I don't think any of these positions were posted for anyone to apply to.
Anybody else? All right, next we'll move on then to the 2023 Development Authority Board Appointments. And we have two members coming off the Development Authority. Greg Zachary unfortunately has expired, and Kevin Patrick is stepping down to serve on the city council. So, the Development Authority has recommended Pete Bober and Aaron Lewis to fill these positions. Do we have any questions or comments?
Are there any other statements of interest submitted?
Any other statements of interest submitted?
Yes, he may have asked, sir. It was in, you received two packs, it was in the second pack.
And there wasn't anyone else?
There was no one else that applied. They were in the timeline of the city.
And what is the timeline? Because I was thinking in the past, in the past, we haven't acknowledged that. We haven't had a deadline on some of the others. But anyway, and then the process for, and the good news, obviously, is that we've got a lot of people, or several people, interested in the position, and we're not looking for people to appoint. You know, we've got more people than we have vacancies, so that's the great news. But when do we change the process to where we have the WPDA recommend versus the council just appointing from the letters of interest?
We've had boards that have recommended members in my tenure to the Development Authority, the Planning Board, the Urban Preservation Commission. They've all recommended people to serve when they're board speakers.
As a precursor to this conversation?
Absolutely.
Well, the only thing I was going to add, Ms. Williams, is that this council does not have to follow that recommendation. The council can appoint whoever, the council decides to...
Right, I realize that. It doesn't take away the board's authority, the council's authority to appoint, other than that, but it just seems to be such a departure from the norm. I was just curious as to when we started to do that.
Again, as in times in the past that have happened, we don't have that, any changes of the state. We have the same people that are continuing on in positions. I don't think it's a departure from the norm. I think it's just this time that that's what occurred with the recommendation, which has occurred in the past.
Anybody else? Any questions?
It's a blessing to have people interested to serve.
It certainly is.
Next.
Sorry.
No, go ahead.
On the Board of Adjustment, it has Legler and Haines, but it has...
We're going to go onto that next.
Oh, okay.
Okay. So, that'll be the 20, that's the 2024, we're moving on, that's no problem. 2024 Board and Committee Appointments, which is on the Board of Adjustments. Currently, Joe Daniel Ziegler's up March 5, 2023, and Andrea Haynes is up March 5, 2023, and we have a vacant seat on the Board of Adjustments. Hawks Library, Elizabeth Lester's term is up March 1, 2024. And the Municipal Planning Board, Aaron Lewis is up March 15, 2024. And then we have a vacant seat on the Municipal Planning Board that also will do that in March. October, we have West Point Historic Preservation Committee, Jane Fuller, October 1, Marshall Sapp, October 1 of this year. And then in December, we'll have another West Point Development Authority member whose term will expire, which will be Josh Moon, which is December 31 of 2024. So, now you got a question about the Board of Adjustments?
Yes, because it says 3, 5, 23.
Yeah, we didn't do it last year. We're just going to do them this year all in March.
So, those boards are still open?
They're still, they're still serving. Anybody else? All right, next we have a sale of an unopened street, and Ed, we'll call on you to explain that.
Yes, sir. We, the city owns property, owns East 4th Street and East 3rd Street. It is an unopened street. Based on the existing residential uses, the city configuration, there's no current or future need for a city street in the location that this is in. The city has utilities located on the property. The property is narrow and cannot be used independently under the current zoning ordinance. The adjacent property owners, Jason and Megan Richardson, have requested to purchase the city parcel of property. City staff notified the two adjoining property owners, and they do not have interest in purchasing the parcel. The city will maintain the easement for current and future utilities. Staff recommends to sell the unopened street to the Richardson's for a price of $846.30. The last sale of an unopened street was to Anita Jones on Sixth Avenue for $15 per foot. The city paid all costs, including the survey associated with the sale. The quoted price to the Richardson's reflects that same amount, basically, using the same process, the city's paying all the costs, and selling the property for $15 per foot.
All right, anybody have any questions, comments?
I have a question. The Anita Jones property was the last time we did that? So, that was since the, is this different than the property that that district bought? That street that runs through there?
We never finished that. They never purchased that property.
They never purchased that?
They'll never finalize.
I didn't remember the price being that $15 per square foot, yeah. But anyway, so that never took place. So, Anita's property was the last time this was done, even though that's through county, and this is Harris County, we use the same guideline?
Yes, based on the ordinance, it's a negotiated price. So, we use the same price.
And it was not, on the two public, Harris County, it was not, I couldn't really see that strip. It looked like the .43 acre that the Richardson's own. It's what's on the plaque, what's on the map. So, it doesn't, it's not a part of the public record that unopened street. It appears that they already own it, in other words.
And that was what they already, they don't, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a, it didn't have to pay taxes on it.
All right, anybody else with that one? Okay, next we'll move on to the Georgia Municipal Employee Benefit Retirement Plan Restatement. Alex, will you explain that?
Sure, Mayor. The city periodically is asked to amend its employee retirement benefit plan. These, this is, this particular amendment is generated by changes in federal tax law. All of these documents and the proposed restated, restatement of the plan were handled by GMA. They, based on those federal tax laws, they presented the proposed restated plan to the IRS. The IRS, late last year, sometime in the fall of last year, approved the proposed amendments as in compliance with federal tax law, and is just asking that the city approve and adopt the restated plans, and they will do that with all municipalities that are members of the GMA retirement, employee retirement benefit plan.
The one question there about city managers as of a certain date was that, I mean, was that so universal throughout the state of Georgia that it was a part of the plan? Or was that specifically addressing our situation in the city of West Point?
None of these documents are specifically addressing the city of West Point. These are all general documents for the entire state.
So, it was pretty commonplace for city managers to do, have some specific language that applied to them. Sounds like, sounds like that.
That's correct, and I think there are some specific languages with respect to a number of positions, but yes, that includes city managers. And these are, these are documents prepared by GMA with respect to the entire state, not just West Point.
Anybody else have any questions regarding this? Okay, next we have the Highland Drive headwall rehabilitation. Ed?
Yes, sir. On the Highland Drive, last spring, we had a headwall collapse through the haylands that time, it exposed the gas line, and did some damage there on the shoulders of the road, undercut the road somewhat. So, over the course of last year, we booked the project, put together a plan, and put that project out to bid, and so we have a bid stipulation that's in your packet. It is more curb concrete paving, roads are controlled, clearing the militia and earthwork. We had three bids. Piedmont paving was $170,769. JBC Contracting LLC was $124,711.13, and Larkin Enterprises was $119,490. So, the low bidder is Larkin Enterprises, and we recommend that the city approve this as low bid, and that's that we'll move forward with those proceedings on the project.
Okay. Any questions, comments?
There are some other situations that kind of relate to this, it seems. Avenue D and seven, this barricade's still there, been there for months. Don't know exactly what's going on, but can you expand upon the status of that?
Currently, we're working on two projects associated with the, well, three, you can call this one, with the rain that's last year. One of those is a pipe on Avenue B that has pretty much collapsed. That will be the next project after this one. Certainly, the project on Avenue D, the engineers are still working on plans for that project, and then we'll hopefully get that, whatever that course of action is, to make that repair without...
And the problems right out here have been addressed and completed, it seems?
Over a summer, I guess.
Yeah, and the closure just across the bridge?
Engineers are working on plans. Hopefully, by the end of this month, we'll have something for the council to look at on that project.
An ally to that, because it is an infrastructure issue. I know that at some point in the past, the guideline was changed for problems with sewage and drainage and so forth. When it goes beyond a property owner's line, and I think, you know, the responsibility was shifted to the property owner, even though it's not on their property. In other words, if they got sewage problem, it used to be, go to the end of your property, it's your responsibility. If it goes beyond that, it's whoever owns the property, the street, it's the right-of-way, you know, whatever, whatever. That was changed. Is that not correct? Is that direct to where, the property owner's responsibility beyond their property line? Is that true or not?
The, on sewer lines, when they were put in originally, we used that in the city. The property owner was responsible for the sewer line all the way to the main. If it was in the street, across the street, on the neighbor's yard, it was their responsibility. Council changed that so that if there were issues that were in the street, then the property owner would be required to put in a new tap, and then the city would be responsible from the right-of-way, edge of the right-of-way into the main.
So, the responsibility was sort of shifted to, if the problem is in the street, and the property owner is responsible for addressing it, then, you know, the property owner digs the street up?
That's what they, that's what they had to dig for?
Not now.
And they will change, change that to make that where they don't have to do that, but they have to pay for a tap.
So, again, you shifted that cost, the responsibility of addressing the issue, because the root cause of the issue is the plumbing or whatever, whoever put it in, whenever it was put in, and there's a problem, it's eroded, it's gotten too old, it's aged, whatever, there's a blockage. And so, instead of the city being responsible for putting that in, whenever it was put in, it's shifted to...
No, it wasn't the city's responsibility. It was the homeowner's responsibility.
Did the homeowner put it in under the street?
Absolutely. It was the homeowner's responsibility to tie it into the main. That's what the problem was. You got a plumber in the middle of the city street digging it up and replacing a tap, a line that came from a house into the city main. That was the issue that really drove the change in having the property owner then just pay for a tap, which is what they would have had to pay the plumber to replace that line from the edge of the right-of-way to the main, and then the city maintains that from then on. The homeowner never has to go back on to the city right-of-way once that's done.
So, why would the homeowner be required to run something beyond what they own? You know, required to run something beyond their board? I know you're saying that's what happened, but, you know, very last part of the issue.
I don't think any of those folks are liable to tell us why that decision was made.
No, of course not, but, of course not, but is that, in your opinion, is that the right thing to do now, to divert that to the property owner? Because they are around?
Again, it was their, it was their responsibility before. It's now becoming the city's responsibility. They're just paying the cost to replace that piece of line, which they would have had to do.
Property owner's responsibility ought to be to the edge of their capacity, in my opinion.
Unless they pay for that tap.
Thank you for, thank you for answering my question.
Anybody else have any comments or questions, or want to know about where our sewer taps go? All right. Non-residential development fees.
Well, Mayor and council, yes, periodically, I know that, and I've kind of taken this, we look at what fees the city charges for development, and so what we've done is, and I'll just go over the recommendation or proposal for updates in the fee schedule. First of all, we're looking at the non-single-family, first of all, which, like many of the other communities, we're going to keep, we're asking to look at the fees, that they stay the same, but in the past, we've lost quite a bit of money on a lot of the commercial and industrial that's come in. So, what, I would like to thank Charles Abbott and Associates for providing a list, which is basically based on the new International Code Congress of what those fees should be, and then they adapted it for the non-residential fee schedule. An example of what we've missed out on and what we're looking at on this fee is 2023, an expansion by IKEA for their assembly shop was valued at $53.5 million. Building permit fees we collected was $17,767.50. If we go by the codes that we have presented before you to look at, and consider... If we go by the codes that we have presented before you to look at and consider, that fee now, based on what our recommendation by the Internet ICC, would be two hundred and two thousand and a hundred dollars for that fee. So we have been questioned by a lot of community, a lot of contractors, wondering why our fees are so low. So we thought it was time to go ahead and look at that and just present it to you to look and review. Again, this is for commercial and industrial apartments, townhomes and things of such, more of a commercial value. Again, we don't want to touch the residential, we want to keep spurring on the single family and duplex type development that's in our city. And I'll answer any questions or any concerns you may have.
Just to clarify the line that the CAA is going to take over.
That's going to be in the, that's the next, that's the next subject. But I mean, I.
Do you want to ask any question about the fees?
Yeah, okay, so there's a townhome.
Yes.
Were you just adding residential or is that?
No, that's going to be part of the, the non, non-single family. I had listed it as a commercial industrial, it falls closer to the commercial, it's also a plan that we view totally differently from the single family or duplex would be reviewed under.
So there was something, I think, somewhere about fences and retaining walls and all of that, all of that is only applicable to if everything except single family?
Correct. On, on, on the sample that we have, the fees, again, some of this can be changed if, if we're talking about electrical, because I did not have time to talk with Sam Yenman or anything like that. In fact, those, those are something totally different that he may want to look at, but we've got things like manufactured homes or mobile homes. Of course, we don't allow mobile homes, but we do allow for the prefabs and the modular homes, in other words, built on a permanent foundation, but we do not allow for the mobile or trailers that are brought in into the city. So that, that could be looked at, but again, probably the primary, I probably should have stated more is the permit fees is what we're, we're looking at and also any calculations about, of, of building valuation, such as the shelves or just the interior walls.
So the thought about, okay, so there's townhomes, the project over in corporate office parking lot, those are townhomes, I understand?
Correct, yes.
And that's multiple, multiple important nine units or something like that?
Yes, ma'am.
That compared to a duplex next door with rental, the price, that's going to be treated the same way?
Single family is going to not, single family and duplex is not going to be treated the same, however, the townhomes and the apartment complexes, hotels, motels are all going to be in that same category.
So duplexes, it says some duplexes and triplexes, so those are not single?
Generally, generally, right, generally in that specification, the codes refer to them as one family and two family. So two family, as we see, is basically a duplex. So whether that's owned or it's, or it's.
So these prices, these increases will apply to those or not apply to those?
Apply to, they won't apply to single family or duplex.
Will it apply to duplex?
No.
Or triplex?
Triplex is a different, so triplex will come under the commercial, so.
Single families and, and single family homes and duplexes?
Correct. We have to treat those as single family, yes.
Any other questions regarding the fee schedule?
These fees will be for new construction.
Correct, new, new construction, but also some of the fee schedules in here also deal with modifications too as well, which is not going to be as high, but.
Now, are there other, like the project over on Tenth Street, are there other, how many are in the queue now in terms of that?
Okay, I will say that they paid under the old schedule, so they just, they were basically based on our regular standby of, and I can't remember what that number, I can't remember that off base. The townhomes that are now going next to the college, they were paid under the old schedule. So anything we have coming up, example would be the, the townho, townhouses proposed for the Scarborough property, we have another set on Highway twenty-nine for apartments, those will come under, if, if you choose to, to approve this, this be what the city council wants to go with, then this will apply to those two that we have right now. The, the other thing too is that there are some other projects that are coming in, I don't know all of them, I just know these two I've been working with in particular on the housing front, but again, we want to encourage the single family housing as we've gone. You see what's going over on the Harris County side, and we'll see more single family going in on the eighteen and up throughout the city, so.
Anybody else have any questions? Okay, so that's the fee schedule. Now let's go on to the, the Charles Abbott Associates Building Inspection and Plan Review Service.
Okay. Um, I have Will Hart, Stephen, or with Charles Abbott, so they'll be glad to answer any questions that you have. What has stemmed from this is we know that we're fixing to get some big projects coming in the way with EB, the ancillary or auxiliary buildings that are going to be built in this area warehousing, and it has taken quite a bit, a load on our staff. We have a building inspector that's trying to handle the res, single family residential, but in the same way, we're also dealing with trying to bring houses up to code because we get those calls constantly and it seems to be a goal of the city is, let's try to get the houses safe and respectable for people to live in. Code compliance has been a big thing as well on keeping up the yards, if you'll notice Tenth Street, I think we're doing a decent job on trying to keep that cleaned up. There's areas that we still need to work on, but when we come about up with the plan review process for these large structural engineering marvels that we are trying to, to go and review and take the word of the engineer, the next step is we're constantly dealing with changes in those plans and that's really setting us back. And so when we're looking at a plan, we're trying to do a review plan for, you know, five days to ten days, it's sometimes taking us thirty days to do that, so we kind of need some help on that. Also with the fire department, in some jurisdictions I've worked with, they basically have one dedicated fire marshal. We're not at the size that we can have an on-staff fire marshal and it goes through the state. So what we had discussed, and this is, is a proposal, is we were looking at maybe a company to come in, help us do the plan review as well as the inspections, not for the single family residential, but for the industrial, the commercial and these multifamily facilities that are coming in. And so we reached out to Will Hart and Tim English, who have worked in this area. In fact, they have a office in Trent County, they work with the City of La Grange, Hogansville, pretty much doing the same thing that we're looking at doing. They're not going to mess with our housing or anything unless we need them to or if that changes, but the outsources to help us with the industrial, the EB plant that's coming in, that's really kind of scary for us to deal with right now, and any of the other facilities that are coming in, you may have some questions for them, you may have some questions for me, but that's what we're looking at right now to help us out during this, a lot of heavy workload that we have right now, so.
All right. Opening up the questions, uh, plans submitted will still be here and?
Well, the, the plans, the plans will, will go for plan review within, not, not the single family and not.
But as far as permitting and, and submitting the plans here and then you get them to them and they get cat files with them or?
Yes, yes.
And they'll, they'll review in their offices and then when they, changes or stuff, are they going to them, are they coming here, how, how are they?
Well, I think the changes will come to us and then we'll get in touch with them or however, this, this is eventually set up. They, can you, can you kind of address what, what you, what services you could provide?
So the city would maintain the permitting and just as Dennis had insinuated, all changes would come to the city and then we would be notified of any changes that were made, we'd come in, do the review, whether we have an office here, we'd be happy to do the review here, or we can take the plans with us, we have an office in La Grange, certainly do the review there, but we're here in Trent County every day.
So it's a temporary outsourced arrangement to handle the influx of projects associated with the EB production?
It, it is for the city as long as we need them, because of course, we're, we're a small city, but we've got a lot going on and we're growing. As we grow, we can tell from a period of time how long we are, how long have y'all been with, in, in La Grange now?
So we've been in La Grange since July twenty-one and we've been in Hogansville since two thousand sixteen. And we also service City of Manchester, City of Thomaston, City of Griffin, Spalding, not Spalding, excuse me, City of, I said City of Griffin, City of Jackson, Flutts County, those are all in this area, but we service over thirty, over thirty communities statewide.
So, so basically, it's as long as, as we feel we need them, as we grow, remember, we're going to have to train, we, we've got Paul going to some training hour, our inspector, there's just one of him. He's really done a good job on working with builders on the houses and the commercial and stuff like that, but like me and like Chief, with this, the, the, the water, the water system and the EVs, we, we don't know enough about that, we just hear what's going on, but I think they, they would help because of their past experience with the Kia plant. So that was one thing we wanted to look at, to make sure it wasn't just a stranger to come in because they had experience working with them. So as we grow, we'll have to get more trained, more inspectors, it just, it just depends on how soon we're going to do that or when, when that, when that is going to happen, so.
Their, their fees are based on a percentage of the new fee structure?
That's correct, yes. I think it's sixty-five percent to, to the city getting thirty-five percent.
But it's not based on the projects that they're involved in?
Yes, it'll be the project, yeah, it won't, it won't have anything to do with the single family residential or the duplex, it'll only do with the res, the, uh, commercial, the non-single family that's.
And they will be, they will be managing all of those?
We would, we would manage, but they would do the inspections and the plan review and whatever else we needed them to do. If, if we wanted to go out and say, could you do the soil and erosion? Right now, we're handling the soil and erosion because we've got a person on staff, our code enforcement officer, that does a great job with that. Whatever, whatever we, whatever the city wishes for their services, we can go one way or the other with that. It just, it just depends on if you want us to continue to do it because we're local. There, there's some things that we're going to work with the state to see whether if eventually we take over the review process, because that review process has, has gone up to like forty-five, fifty days instead of the thirty days that they had specified.
Do they take it all the way through the CO?
Huh? Yes, 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 they will. The fees indicate to what all, you know, they, they have all that tied in. We don't charge fees for a CO and it doesn't necessarily mean they have to charge.
Is it, is it in this new structure?
It's in that new structure, but it just depends on whether you decide we're going to do it or we're not going to do it.
So that's a separate fee than the actual permit fee?
Yeah, there's also plan review fees, which we already do that as well, so.
Well, I was asking about the, about the involvement and whether it was temporary, so you no longer have this influx of projects that's coming, you say. Whenever I hear outsourcing for services, you know, one of the main things you think about is existing staff and what happens there, you know, in many cases, you're going to downsize your existing staff and I know you're very, very small and so if you got work coming fast enough and enough of it, not going to be able to do that. So that was really just the question I had, is it going to impact people who are already employed with the city in any way?
No, we're, we're moving forward with getting Paul trained and, and discussions with Tim and, and Will at one time, if there's any event that he wants to learn a little bit while they're doing this, they'll be willing to help provide that. Of course, I shouldn't be, I'm saying it just basically because we spoke about it, but it's all going to depend on what kind of contract you want to sign with them, so.
Question?
Yes, sir.
So I, I want to put in a commercial project, so I'll contact the city and submit the plans. I'm assuming you all look at them electronically?
Yes, sir, we can.
Do you want paper or do you want electronic?
Whatever the, whatever the, whatever the process is for the city currently, we'll, we'll work with it that way. So if you have the ability to do digital plan, we have the ability to do digital plan review, if that's something that the city's currently requiring as digital plans, then we can, we can certainly move.
And what's your typical turnaround time on a twenty-five million dollar commercial?
The proposal that we gave was anything over ten million dollars was two weeks. Basically, I think it's fifteen days and anything less than ten million was one week, seven days. Of course, those are business data.
I page that again. The, the, calling in permits, how does that work? I mean, inspection, excuse me.
I mean, we'd have to look at the current situation with the city. Typically, what we'd like to do is set up an email, if you don't have a, like a portal or something, and the email would come in and maybe we'd be copied on the email, so that way we'd know, and then as long as we get the inspection request by four o'clock that afternoon, we'll be out the next day.
Okay. I know there's a lot to work out, just, just, I've done that, I'm in that industry.
Yes, sir.
So I've kind of, there's a lot of things to consider and nobody's really happy ever, so.
When the expectation that a city our size could have a building inspector that could handle all the way from single family all the way up through these massive factories is not realistic.
No, that is not. I think it's smart that you look forward enough to know that you're about to be underwater and you need some help and I appreciate that.
Very smart.
All right, anybody else have any questions, comments on, on that? All right, the items on the business meeting for Monday, January eighth, two thousand twenty-four, five thirty P M. will be the swearing in of elected officials, mayor and council members, appointment of city officers, swearing in of city attorney, recognized Gus Darden, downtown West Point Development Authority, twenty twenty-three Development Authority Board appointments, sale of unopened street, Georgia Municipal Employee Benefit Retirement Plan Restatement, Highland Drive Headwall Rehabilitation, non-residential development per, permit fees, Charles Abbott and Associates Incorporated Building Inspection and Plan Review Service. I think we'll have something to say about the passing of Griggs Zachary two on Monday night, so add that to it. So those are the items for that night. Do we have any announcements?
Yes.
Okay.
Lambda Zeta Omega Chapter of Alpha Kappa Alpha would like for you all to come and attend a MLK breakfast. This will be the first year since COVID that we are meeting in person and it's going to be the fifteenth at ten o'clock at Goodson United Methodist Church. The guest speaker will be Dr. Willie T. Edmison, Mayor of La Grange, Georgia.
Lambda Zeta Omega Chapter of Alpha Kappa Alpha. I got it.
Yes.
Doctor Stein?
All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second? Allen Fair?
Aye.
You're going to stay, all right.
You would need to do a two-minute briefing.
I will?
Yes.
Okay.
Two minutes.
Two minutes.
I.